Good morning. Today is Monday, July eleventh. Are we on? Are we recording? Okay, thank you. Good morning. Today is Monday, July 11th, 2022. The time is 9:07 a.m. We're a few minutes late getting started. I apologize for that. This is a regular term meeting of B County Commissioners' Court. We are physically located at B County Courthouse Commissioners' Court Room Number 110, 105 West Corpus Christi Street, Eagle, Texas, 78102. This is your call to order. Agenda item number two. Would everybody please stand and join Commissioners' Board? I appreciate it. Watch over the court and all the paperwork that we do here. We ask you to watch over these young folks that are coming in, that are future first responders and police officers. We thank you. We ask you for the abundance of rain to come. And we thank you for all the blessings provided to this county. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That's the Texas pledge. I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
I think I need to go to a hypnotist to get me to overcome this mental block that I have with the conflation between the United States pledge and the Texas pledge. My continued apologies. In fact, I'll just call it a running apology for here and all future Commissioners' Courts. I'd like to take this time. This is agenda item number four. Recognize visitors. I know we have a few visitors in the audience today. I recognize some faces. Visitors that we have regularly and some that we don't. This is not public comment. This is just an opportunity if any visitor would like to stand up and identify themselves for the record. I'm not asking you, and you're not allowed to make any public comments during this, but if you'd like to do that now, now is your time.
My name is Angela, and it's my first time.
Thank you for being here this morning, Angela. We look forward to talking to you a little bit later on in the agenda. Yes, sir, Mr. Vabod.
Dino, we want to.
Thank you for being here again this morning, sir. Anybody else? There's no pressure at all.
Tracy Florence behind there.
Thank you for being here, Ms. Florence.
I'm Becky Taylor with Grant Works.
Oh, thank you, Heather, for being here.
My name is Paul Pierman. I'm the newest deputy that B County's going to have starting today. I come from B County.
We're glad to have you, Paul. Welcome. Thank you for being present this morning. Is there anybody else who'd like to identify themselves? We do have public comments still coming up, so no pressure. And you don't have to identify yourself. Thank you. Welcome. Please come back. Come often. Moving on, agenda item number five. Commissioners' Court opening remarks. If y'all don't mind, at this time, before we start the opening remarks, there was a recent unfortunate tragic passing of a young lady from Skidmore, Tinen, ISD. Her name is Casey Rivers. And I'd ask that we all take a moment of silence to reflect on her unfortunate passing and our thoughts and prayers. I know her with her family and friends at this time. Okay, thank you very much. Now, for Commissioners' Court remarks. Where are we starting?
Commissioner Lenny, you have the floor, sir. Just please leave it on for everybody else.
Good start.
Uh, yeah. Not a whole lot going on. Got with Ray on some issues with potholes and some downsides. Stuff I've taken care of. Thanks, Ray. And with Robbie, illegal dumping. I've noticed that myself and Robbie are not happy to go out quite as much. So that's a positive note. But it's still happening. And I'm sure it will always happen. But it's been decreased by my observation. We've got that taken care of. That's really about it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yes, thanks for going well in the precinct. I'd like to use my time this morning to issue a caution, if you will, to everyone this time of the year in water. And let's talk about amoeba. Amoeba is a single-celled organism. It is out there all the time in puddles of water, on the side of the road, in lakes and rivers and everything else. But this time of the year, with the warmth, with the stagnant water, they proliferate. And I want to take you back to my time with Mark Swann. We had a situation in the Freeo River when I was in Austin Headquarters, where we had a young lady swimming in the Freeo River. Amoeba entered her brain through her nose, and it is dead. We put up signs caution amoeba present in water. What happened at the Freeo River? It stops flowing this time of the year, sometimes in extreme drought, and you get these pools of water. Well, those pools are a lot of fun to swim in. I've done it. You all have done it. But the amoeba proliferate in those pools. And if they get into your nose and they get to your brain, it's a form of entelitis. It will kill you as a general rule. I was reading this morning, there's a situation on a public beach in another state where they have stopped all swimming because of the amoeba. The symptoms? Six to 10 days after you encounter amoeba, severe headaches. Get to a doctor as soon as you possibly can. But be cautious in your stock tanks. Water that's not chlorinated. If you have a swimming pool, be sure your chlorine content is up where it should be because these amoeba are there all the time. They're a natural occurring organism. But they proliferate in warm water and warm weather. So be cautious. On that note, throw our own pass to my Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Just Commissioners, this past week, we had another salary committee to review some of the numbers that were presented to us. So we have that. And then I had a meeting, Zoom meeting with IT and another gentleman on broadband and some of the cyber stuff that we've learned at the conference a couple weeks ago. So I was just kind of highlighting him with that. There's a lot of monies out there, federal monies, that are out there for broadband. And what they announced at the conference was that they're not being used. None of the 254 counties are even applying for any use. So I got in on that. There was a contract that came in from Mercer for the upgrade in addition to the tax office. So that'll be on the agenda later on, reviewing that. I had a brush call on Old Houston Highway and Roden Bridge. So I'll just thank you to take care of that for me. And got a BDA meeting. And we did approve Neo Industries to come into BDA for a new build-out. So they're working on the contract now. So hopefully we'll get that all finalized and done. But we've got another company to come.
Okay, the company's not called Neo Industries?
No.
Neo. Neo Industries. Neo Industries. Are you at liberty to tell a little bit about the others?
They are backed up to Steel Dynamics. They're a rechroming outfit. And right now, they have to rechrome all of their material day to make the steel pipes thin. So to rechrome it, they take it all. They drive it all the way to Georgia, have it rechromeed, and truck it back. So you can imagine how many days it is to truck it and the expense it is to truck it to Georgia. So this would be a significant change for them and a real game changer for Steel Dynamics. So we're working real hard with them to get them up and running. So that'd be a big improvement. We had two days of budget hearings. JP3, their fax is back online. We were having problems with their fax line. So we're, Kyo Sarah came in and they adjusted some items on his machine. And then I had a meeting with Dr. Hargreaves explaining that they've got an upcoming auditor cap. Did you call it a cap in this country?
Uh, they're called ACFR now.
Okay. I knew there was an ACFR there. They got that coming in. And that's before help from some of the areas. Related officials trying to come in and talk to some people. That's it. I'll pass to Commissioner Hargreaves.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let me emphasize then what he's talking about. It's when they make the steel pipe, it's the dyes. So they steal through there, and that's what tears the chrome off of it. Has to be re-chromed. It's the same as you. Most of you remember the Modern Plastics. Same thing. It's mechanistic. But the difference is, steel again is much harder. As far as mine, been on the phone with GLO and the Coastal Bend Council of Governments on the proposed funding coming to B County. Got with the auditor, gave her some information. We'll be sharing that with six other entities. Via B County, of course, the city of Beville, Live Oak County. Correct me if I'm wrong. It's not Live Oak, is it? Jim Wells. Jim Wells County in Alice. Also picks up Primont. And then I forget the other one.
Sorry, I don't have.
I can't remember which one it is. But there's two more. Anyway, we go with that. Had a few phone calls on some water issues, believe it or not, water in the ditches. But unfortunately, it's caused by the city of Tinen flushing their lives. Once they're doing this, flushing their fire hydrants into the ditches, which has caused water to stand. Believe it or not, grass grows when you put water on it. So got with Ray. Ray got with the longtime baseball player that he used to play against. Got with him. They're going to fix those problems there. Other than that, also attended the Salary Safety Committee meeting, Salary Committee meeting with the rest of the group. And two days of budget hearings. Pretty much that's it. Not much else is going on. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner, for your report. Yes, if you have one more?
That is the shortest change of status miss that I've seen.
Yeah. Been a while.
Been a while. It has been good. It's been a slow, slow couple of weeks for the Sheriff's Office. We three on there. So I'd like to take my time. I just didn't breathe to thank my Commissioners for your solid work when I was out gallivanting on vacation. There were a couple of meetings. They had a regular term meeting, which I know they all executed well. But then, very excitingly, they had their special call meeting, I think on Thursday, where we're moving forward with a solution for the Sheriff's Office to gel humidity issues. So I'm sorry that I was unable to attend. I always feel very comfortable when I'm out knowing that our County Commissioners fill in the gaps and the holes, even when I'm here, and pick up the slack and take the lead. This is a wonderful team that we have sitting at this table. And it makes the work that I have to do so much more pleasurable and much easier. So gentlemen, thank you all very much. While I was out. That's it. Let's move on with public comment. We're going to make this an efficient meeting today. I shouldn't have said that right before public comment. Anybody that wants to speak, can speak for as long as you want, up to three minutes. I think we're going to start public comment. I'm calling the agenda item number six, public comment. Let's start with the Sheriff's Office Chief Deputy Ronnie Jones. Do you have a public comment for us this morning, sir?
Yes, sir. Good morning. As you know, we have our Junior Deputy Academy. Usually, we have it in June. Scheduling conflicts occur. We're having it in July. We're having several. It's not the only week. But it's a great program. We get sponsorship from local businesses to do this. They cost a little bit of money to do it. We have a youth send to 14. And it's not just geared to law enforcement. These are not all going to be cops. We teach the EMS fire, local government. And the goal is to show them public service. They get into public service. And with all the sharing, just be in a better system.
It's such a great program. Chief Deputy, if somebody that's watching is interested, have one of their nieces, nephews, sons, or daughters, granddaughter, or grandson participate. How would they?
It's always on our Facebook. Usually, in the first part of the year, January, February, March, we'll announce it to sign up. And then we usually got, usually we have it in June. Like I said, we're having it in July this year. We're scheduled to throw 96 of them through this month. It'll be three different weeks. So we're just glad to have them. They range, you know, 10 to 14.
It's a great looking group of kiddos. Y'all want to take a picture real quick?
It's the first day.
You're all shy. First day.
First day, first tour.
Yeah, the second hour.
Welcome, welcome. You guys are going to have a blast. Why don't, Commissioners, we're all going to stand up and move our chairs out of the way. Y'all kind of walk this way.
Be careful. Get in front of us.
Line y'all up in front of us.
Smile.
When the cameras start shooting, you gotta give the camera.
That's on Thursday.
Awesome. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. I need to thank them because they're letting me deck for center on Thursday for all of us. You're the guys. People want to make a protest. That's where the fun stuff happens. Oh, yeah. You're all kidding me.
Where's the button?
It's a woo-woo.
Y'all, it's fun. Thank you for coming in this morning.
Thank you very much.
You guys. Okay, excellent. Take them up on the roof.
On the roof. Uh-oh. Stay away from the edges.
I know, and they go.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yeah, there's a chair on the second floor. I didn't like to be around.
He signs it all.
Do we got, thank you, Chief Deputy Jones, for that public comment. Is there anybody else who'd like to make a public comment this morning?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Florence.
I just thought about this. I just wanted to let everybody know that the Texas Travel Industry Recovery Program just announced last week that they're taking applications for grants in the amount of $20,000. And it is in support of Texas, the tourism, travel, and hospitality industry, which affects hotels, restaurants, convention centers. You know, it's a whole list of different hospitality industry businesses that it helps. So I just wanted to make you all aware of it so people can go online and look at it and publicly submit their application for it.
Thank you so much. And just for the record, that's Tracy Florence. No, it's okay. Are you Executive Director?
Yes.
Is that the title, Executive Director of B County Chamber of Commerce? Thank you so much. And Mrs. Florence? If somebody was interested in learning more about that, is there a link maybe that will be available on the B County website?
Yes. It will be on our website. We're also posting it on Facebook and sending out for our members.
Excellent. Thank you for sharing that this morning. Is there anybody else who'd like to make a public comment? Okay, moving on. Agenda item number seven. The following items are of an administrative nature. Commissioners' Court has been furnished documentation on each item, and all such items may be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a Commissioner or County Judge.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further action? Or discussion, sorry. No further action. Hearing none, all those events presented by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed without objection. Thank you, gentlemen. Discuss and consider action on the following items. Agenda item number eight. Approved request for sponsorship of Leadership B County in partnership with the B County Chamber of Commerce. And I, we do have Mrs. Florence here this morning. And Mrs. Florence, I'd like to give you an opportunity to, we do have your letter that you sent to me in our packet. But I'd love for you to make a short presentation in just a moment about what Leadership B County. Sorry, yeah. I'm sorry. For those that are on camera, I keep saying that I'm going to let her talk. I keep talking. Standing up and sitting down. What I wanted to say before I turn the floor over to you is that we have looked at Texas Attorney General opinions with respect to the availability and the legality of utilizing funds, B County funds, to support a program like Leadership B County. And if the Commissioners' Court believes that Leadership B County provides a benefit to the community, which I personally, I do think we're in effect, we're training future leaders, future local government, and business leaders in our community. We're creating contacts. Contacts. Contacts and relationships for which our entire community will flourish. Then we pass the legislative requirement, which would allow us to make this donation. The donation amount is not substantial sum. It's $1,500. Ms. Florence, I now turn the floor.
Good morning. For the record, Tracy Florence, Executive Director of the B County Chamber of Commerce. Excited to start back the leadership program this year and next year. Month program. A few years back, we had the class for a couple of years. And we went through the Texas Rural Leadership Program, which taught servant leadership. This year, we're going 100% public service route. As you know, many of elected officials and individuals in our community, not only on one board, but on multiple boards. And we felt it important to start back the leadership program and teach them all about our elected positions in our community as being a County Commissioner, a County Judge, a City Councilmember, a Mayor. You know, our BEIC, our BDA's, our VAT's. I mean, our nonprofit organizations. I mean, when you start listing them, there are so many different organizations that need support from our community members. And so our whole program is going to be about teaching them about these positions, what it involves, the terms. Are they elected? Are they, you know, how to go about even getting involved? And so we're going to, we kick off the class with a road course. And then we go right into local government, city government, healthcare, you know, into economic development with the BDA and VAP and so forth. And so it's a really rewarding program. And at the end of the year, we have the graduation ceremony. And we even take a trip to State Capitol. Jane Lozano's office will be in charge of putting together our agenda, getting to meet some of our state legislators. So I mean, it's something that's pretty exciting for a lot of these young individuals. And hopefully, we can all of them and have some blood.
Thank you so much, Ms. Florence, for that presentation. I entertain a motion at this time.
I'll make a motion to approve the comment. The does provide a benefit to the community, in my opinion.
Thank you, Commissioner. With that, I have a second. I have a second. Commissioner Lenny, any further discussion?
The comment I have, I was forced enough to go through Leadership B County many years ago. One of the parts of the program that I really remember was the shadow program, where they would pick an elected official, maybe the County Judge or Commissioner. And that individual in your program would spend a half a day with them to see what they did. To me, that was one of the most valuable things that I got. Plus the Austin trip. So I admire what y'all are doing. It's a lot of work. And yes, it's to form it and create future leaders, make them look at it and decide, do I really want to do this? Or do I want to do something else? So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. What, any other discussion? I'd just say civics, folks. It's why for many of us, your toilet flushes, water comes out of your tap, your road's not full of potholes. It sometimes can seem unsavory in the news. But this is the reality of the world that we live in, in the United States of America. Public service is incredibly important. We are even as isolated as we may feel at times. We are all part of a community. And if some of us don't stand up and serve for a period of time, nobody will serve, and our toilets will flush, and water will flow, and our roads will be paved. So thank you to the Chamber of Commerce for getting this program started up again. And hopefully, there's a lot of interest. If there's no further discussion, all those who favor it, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed without objection. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Moving on, agenda item number nine. Presentation on 211 Texas Services to Include Their Role During Disasters and Information About the State's STEAR Database Given by Janice Shue, Outreach and Disaster Coordinator, Coastal Bend of 211 Texas, Forward slash United Way of Greater Houston.
Excellent. Thank you. What a great radio media voice.
Oh, thank you.
To be introduced to me.
I have a good face for radio, too.
There you go. I knew it was going to start.
Oh, yes, really. While you're passing that stuff out, a big fan of United Way of Greater Houston, I used to be on a team of leadership council.
Oh, well, thank you. Thank you for serving. So I'm Janice Shue, Outreach and Disaster Coordinator, 211 Texas. I cover the Coastal Bend County, providing outreach and education about our services, actually the statewide service. We actually will celebrate our 20th anniversary answering the first call in Austin on October 2nd this year. We have big plans to celebrate that. We are a 22-hour helpline available by dialing 211. We also have chat available on our website, 211Texas.org. There are 25 contractors under Texas Health and Human Service Commission who receive funding from legislation, general revenue, to provide 211 service. And so each area information center has a geographical location, mainly the same at council of governments or workforce, you know, geographical regions. So that's why I cover the 12 counties, doing outreach and education. So daily, we're receiving calls about basic needs. And I set a PowerPoint for Candy, and it has B County data on it. And so I did want to share that with y'all. So last year, for the Coastal Bend 12 counties, we have had over 47,000 connections, meaning calls, website, email to the helpline. Primarily calls, people needing help. And of those, about 47,000, I think it was 915 were veteran-related military. We are required to ask on each call, if you are a veteran. If so, what branch you serve. If you're not, you're active duty, civilian. That is legislation we are written into after Operation Iraqi Freedom and Inherent Freedom, so that our guard and reservists, when they return back from their deployments, they may not have been affiliated with the base or a post they may not have been affiliated with the base or a post and couldn't access military support services directly, so they can call 211. It's confidential. We need a zip code that's minimal and we can give them community resources for counseling, relationship issues, subsidies, whatever they may be dealing with. So that's, I mean, what we need. We got comprehensive regional database of resources. So B County, of course, is listed, your Office of Emergency Management, which I just want to say I have a special place for B County in my heart because I brought myself and my mom over here to get our COVID vaccines.
All right.
First and second dose. Thank you to Mike Willow and Ryan, who I've known for many, many years. So predominantly, our calls, like I said, are basic needs. People needing help with rent payments, utilities, water, gas bills, food. So our number one referral here is the Deville Vineyard. So we are very grateful that agency is here to provide the services to us. And those are typical, about 85% of our calls are daily basic needs. Or help for older adults, people at home that may need providers. In May, it was summer camp. A child's going to need a place to go, or can I, you know, is there a camp they can go to or latchkey service? And then Hurricane Stephen began June 1st, right? So the most attention we do get is our role during disasters. So if you remember, March 13, 2020, texted us that COVID-19, 211 Option 6, on the static display, we are still in state by routing for that. Of the total calls we had last year, about 26,000 were COVID-19 related for the 12 counties. So you will see your data there. I think there was about 200 or 300 calls to B County for COVID-19 related services. So a lot of those referrals are back to your vaccine site, testing site, you know, all the programs y'all still have going on and services. We also have a role during steer. Our helpline is contracted with Texas Division of Emergency Management to enter in what they call steer calls, State of Texas Emergency Assistance Registry. And this is a year-round database. People can register. It was originally developed for the coastal counties along Texas for evacuation, in the event of evacuation of hurricanes. This is statewide database that TM created. And so data custodians are assigned. So I'm assuming Ryan is still the data custodian here. So he pulls that data, has variety of questions, about access functional needs, so that, and planning for any kind of local event or disaster, if you get time ahead of plan, right? He could pull that information and see how many would need evacuation assistance, if they have medical needs, if they have a pet, if they're insulin dependent, which, you know, you have to have your insulin refrigerated, if they're dialysis, if they have a parrot at home, if they have a threat home from family, et cetera. So there's a lot of questions. So you can dial 211, press your language option and Option 4. Speak with our call specialist. Takes about 15, 20 minutes for steer because there are so many questions. But it's very valuable. Family use from hurricanes. I can tell you, beginning of COVID response, the City of Rocktown Fire Chief called me and said, "We want to do a food drive when everything was closed down." And so they did that. They did the food and water drive and they used their steer information and delivered directly to those who were homebound, who didn't have a way to go and get water information. Rafferty County used their data when it was time to roll out the homebound vaccine program. And they used their information to figure out where they could partner with the state to go do homebound. City of Corpus Christi has done that. The fire department, they were recognized for that as well. And then, if you remember the West incident, the fertilizer explosion incident, unfortunately happened, they used that data to go do door-to-door search and rescue. That's how they did their well-checked business, is by pulling their steer data. So thank you for letting me come talk to you today about 211 and steer. Just a reminder, register now. I know y'all are not evacuating counties, but you sure get the people who passed through, who may stay in your hotels and your, you know, gas stations. They get stranded here if they can't, you know, get butter along the road or don't have the money to continue to pay for gas or hotel or shelter. So have them register with steer and they can always call us 211 24 hours a day. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Peter. Were there any questions, Commissioner? I really appreciate the time that you've made this morning.
Thank you. I appreciate you, Judge, letting me get on your agenda come last minute. Thank you.
Always. Excellent, excellent organization and excellent resource for B County citizens. Just, again, 211, basic needs, senior services, veteran services, childcare, employment services, healthcare, legal services, disaster resources. If you have a question and you're looking for answers, call 211. If they can't help you, they'll tell you. Thank you so much, Commissioner.
Thank you so much.
Moving on, agenda item number 10, approved Texas Association of Townspeople's health and employee benefits and medical renewal for 2022, 2023. Who wants to give us this good news in summary? This is going to, or you want me to do it?
Um, I think.
Oh, we have HR. I'm sorry. Mr. Custia.
He's hiding in your corner.
Mr. Custia, we all want you to tell us. How much money are we going to be saving this year?
No, no. Those DPOs, those DPOs definitely go back to the auditor. I'm actually the HR director. Basically, this is the, the, our option that was the, let me get my bearings here, guys. This is the option that the insurance committee, yes, the insurance committee agreed on to go with, out of the better of the options that were given us. One option would definitely throw things way over. The other option would actually, wouldn't really buy us much more by going down a little bit, which is that option 5BNG. So staying where we're at, it wasn't that big of a jump and we would probably lose a little more than we would gain by jumping to the, to the little bit cheaper option two. Option one was probably not an option because it was just way too high. So there's where we fell in regards to that. And everything basically stays the same. It's just the decrease that tax put on us due to the fact that, you know, everything went up over the, over the years. Our percentage is better than some counties, not as good as others, but that's the nature of percentages in regards to being a whole. So this is the one that would, we'd probably be going into, so it's y'all's budget. And what I need here is the okay, so we could actually get them working on it in time for us to have it for this year.
Would you approve with the comment?
I have a motion, I have a second.
A motion and a second.
So comment, basically, and from what I'm reading into this, it's still not going to cost the employee anything for the basic insurance. That is correct.
Yes, sir. Everything stays exactly the same. In fact, the insurance only means one bit. So what they're used to now, which was a transition, going from a DPO to an HMO was definitely a transition. And of course, it, it, some transitioned well, others didn't transition that easily. But I think due to maybe not understanding going from one to another, were a lot of pickups there. The calls we got in our office, we helped individuals that we can, along with tax, to ensure that that transition went smooth. And we will continue to do that. I come to realize that as the employees start realizing how the insurance works now, they come to see it's not that big of a, of a change. I think the biggest change I'm seeing is those actual physicians that are locally here in our area, some of them are just poor and, you know, they have to reach out beyond Deville to find a new physician if they don't actually have one here on that work.
Well, I think, I think the main thing, and I think it's big for both, we don't want to put any more on the employee than we actually have to. So the county's paying for the premium for the employee. So that's very important to me personally.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for serving on the committee. Appreciate it.
Thank you for the committee's work. Yeah, it, go ahead.
No, I do, I do want to say that a $700,000 increase going up would be $300,000, like it was last year. So that's, that's dollars and cents to it.
And employees' children, spouse and family rates haven't changed either this year. And that's something for the Commissioners Court that in future budget years, we can unfortunately have to address because this is a 200,000 dollar increase. Thank you, Mr. Custia. Any other discussion, comments, questions for Mr. Custia? If not, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 11, approved contract with Grant Warp Seem to provide hazard mitigation plan writing services for the General Land Office, GLO, Local Hazard Mitigation Planning Program Grant. Thank you, Commissioner. I have a motion. Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Miss Utadia, anything? Just.
This is for the upgrade of the five-year mitigation from Mr. Willis.
Okay, thank you so much. There's no further discussion. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Agenda item number 12, approved request for B County to be the anchor county under the Texas Department of Agriculture, TDA Colonial Planning and Needs Assessment Grant. I'm going to turn the floor over to Miss Utadia in just one moment. But I will say, I participated in a conference call on this, maybe was it a month and a half ago in May?
Yes.
And the TDA, the representatives of the TDA thought B County would be a great, a great resource to chair this. It is an increase in workload for us, or is it an eight-county region?
Uh.
Seven?
Eleven.
Eleven?
Seven counties.
Seven, 11th or eight counties. It's, we're sort of, we're not on, we're, we're not picking up any border counties. And it deals with grant funding in relation to colonias, of which B County has several. And our counties, again, like I said, they don't, our range, thank you, doesn't include 11 counties. Potential funding for these colonial grants, improvement grants, is $705,000 for our region. And I am going to turn it over to Miss Utadia. The only thing I want to make sure that, that we identify is that there is a component, a compensation component to the county for serving in this role of up to $55,000. Miss Utadia, please tell us a little bit more about what Texas Department of Agriculture is asking of B County this year.
Okay. Grace Utadia, the B County County Administrator. Like Judge said, he was, PDA reset TM via email to, for us to become the anchor county. And it's a mainly, if my word is right, a pilot program. They're just now looking for other counties to be the anchor county. We were selected because we were the furthest of the border. I believe that's what you said. But they're starting this program because the Office of Colonial Initiative was disbanded. So now they're needing, TDA is needing information on all the colonias. It was disbanded in 2014, so now they want to update all their information and who, what colonias need assistance. So this needs assessment is more of, we're going to hire a planner, writer, administrator to go out and assess all the colonias and see what their needs are. And from there, the $705,000 are going to be dispersed accordingly. The $25,000, I believe, I talked to April this morning, is for our administrative funds, but that's 62, 50 a year. I'm not really clear on a lot of stuff. I don't know if there's a match. I did talk to Lilithy, so one of the anchors counties that they were asking. She said there was a match, but she wasn't sure what it was. So I also don't know what kind of information the planner's going to have to collect. I like to request, you know, formats of what they're going to add. That way, if I have to hire a planner, I'm going to tell them what information they have to gather for the colonias. So.
I, I didn't see where there was a match in, in these documents that are before us on this agenda or the next agenda. But for context, the, as the, as the anchor county, it's not going to be B County's, it's, it's not going to be B County's job duty to go to different counties and collect data on their colonias. The other counties in our region would enter into MOUs with B County. They would collect their data utilizing the grant administrator or the nonprofit that we retain to assist in the process to fill that information so that when it's all said and done, the TDA will have data on our 11 counties and will have an apportionment for future grant options. And I have to believe that the, that the, that the matching component would be with grant awards to colonias, not to serve as the aggregator of data amongst the 11 county regions.
Correct.
But that would definitely be very important.
Correct. I believe that with the interlocals, they're going to also share within the match. There's a match. I'm not really sure.
So could we dispense with protocol and discuss this thoroughly before we take a vote?
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah, no, I want to, yeah.
Twenty-some-odd years ago, when I was at Community Fairs, we went through something like this on the colonias in B County. It was myself, Oscar Tolliver and two guys from Department of Health, literally went all over the county and those colonias with a pad and a paper interviewing people. I think this is the follow-up from that because what happened has expired.
Correct.
I, I've got a lot of trepidation with this because there's so many holes in this. They have gotten rid of a department that did this and they're going to put it on the county. I'm going to call it another unfunded mandate. They're going to give us, they're going to dangle $25,000 out there. But when I read, and the second one's even worse than this one, in my opinion. So your anchor county, we're going to apply for grant funding and execute grant agreement with TDA. We're going to execute interlocal agreements with each partnering county. In other words, you or whoever it is is going to have to go to each county and do those agreements. They're going to give us a sample document. Then we're going to execute an agreement with the planning services providers. Every bit of this is putting responsibility on the anchor county. Then we're going to oversee the planning process. We're going to collect the final reports from each county, which means somebody has to tell them how to do those reports. Maybe hire somebody, I don't know. But here again, we're responsible. We're going to submit payment requests, project completion reports and other grant documents that's needed. That's all got to come to one place. Somebody's going to take on a huge amount of work because if they had major offices doing this, now they're going to have one office in an anchor county who gives $25,000. Then the county may request up to 20, may request up to $25,000 administrative costs. Anyway, I've, I've got some real trepidations, sir. I just want to get that in the record.
No, that's fair. And I, I have the same concern as you do.
Do we have any? No. Do we have any projects right now in the, in the colonial? I know that we don't have any guys here now, but.
We had some a couple of years ago.
If you would, the projects that we entered into when I was involved were the pre-septic system.
The septic system?
$625,000. But to do that, you've got to have all this information on the income, the people that live there, what they do for a living, the whole nine yards. And the projects come up on a rolling basis. In other words, maybe we're going to do a water system for Toledo or something for Tynan. And that's when those colonial projects come up.
Because everything wanted to have to meet the most work in it. I saw like third on the list, you already had any on here. But remember all the septic, we put in Blueberry Hill and all that, fixing all the water stuff? That was a part of this grant.
Back in, I mean, back in the day.
Exactly. It was part of the colonial.
Yeah, I think this is actually to aggregate all of the data, not to use awards of the.
I agree. I'm just afraid the workload is going to drop on somebody over here in B County.
Because what it is.
There's a lot of unknowns here.
Yes, and it's a lot of unknowns. And so they're going to want to hire an admin and that information isn't on here. I mean, we're going to oversee that. And just like with all of our other grants, we'd have to have a POC on, on the Commissioners Court to, you know, to be in with Miss Utadia and myself on these meetings. So.
We have a new commissioner coming on that doesn't have any projects right now.
So that would, that would be important. But there's still, there's still a lot not clear.
I agree.
Still a lot.
And we've been on, well, we, I think I've been on two conference calls. Grace, how many conferences have you been on with TDA?
Uh, two, actually.
Just to do this?
Yes, it's two.
Okay. So it, it has come up very last minute and I told, I told Miss Utadia and Candy I'm willing to look at it, run with it, try to figure out what's going on. But you, you guys have seen the documents. You know what's contained in them. Heard from Miss Utadia, she's literally is our point person on this and there's a lot of questions that, that still be, still aren't answered. Is there any direction court would like to take at this time? Would you like to ask TDA to go back or just we can table this and bring it back? They wanted to have this all done with, I think with a.
Application.
Right-hand resolution by the end of July.
Judge, I'll be honest with you, the trepidation that I feel and the uncertainty, my motion is to not be the anchor county.
I have a motion, I have a second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I'd like to thank Miss Utadia. I, I know it's taken, and, and this is going to, I know our, our offices have looked into this and done our dead level best to get an idea of what the expectations are, expectations of B County would be as an anchor county. And so I'd like to, I'd like to express our appreciation for the amount of effort and work that has already gone in to try to figure this out. And I'm sure that the Texas Department of Agriculture understands because I'm sure that they're getting this type of feedback from the other counties that they've reached out to.
This one jeopardizes in the future as far as this.
Not at all. Not at all.
It's not going to.
Not so much because I'm from, I understand that we don't have the.
Well, yeah, if you don't participate. But if the anchor.
Okay, if the anchor county?
No, no, no. Okay.
We're just being asked, right? But we're in, under no, you know, certain, that new.
It, it seems like the Texas Department of Agriculture has been placed in the difficult position that they're seeking B County to part. It's, it's kind of like the same thing in their case, probably the Texas Legislature. They're not allowed to take them to. So we can respectfully and politely say not at this time for us. Any further discussion? Oh, yes, Miss.
I did reach out to Lilithy. I did talk to Kathy. She's the one that helped me a little bit. And they're also not going to be so far from the anchor.
Could mean that the Texas Legislature needs to come up with a different plan.
Different plan.
Collect data for state programs. Yes, ma'am, Commissioner?
Hi, I just want to make a comment. I'm involved with a couple of colonial coalitions, there's two nonprofits, Oasis County and one out of Clayburn. Now I'd be happy to get your name and email, a lot of information back to you as well, Judge.
Thank you so much.
Have been many, many years getting grants. Oasis County Commissioner Jopin Ballas, he has sat up and takes care of all of those issues. But then there's a nonprofit that went foreign out of Texas, in Kingsville, some students just formed it about four months ago to address colonias. There's also another colonial initiative, let's email. And I will let you know about them. I'll send you the information. In case of you to talk to them.
Okay, yes, thank you so much.
Thank you again, Miss Utadia. Anything further?
Oh, with your permission, would you like me to email Mr. Bernard and tell him we're not going to?
Switch to laughter, Commissioners Court. We can do it. I'll, I'll, we'll take care of, I'll talk to you about that.
Okay.
One thing that we have to remember, when you start comparing colonias in different counties, the ones in B County are hugely different than those further south. We have septic systems, we have water wells, we have water systems in Tynan, we have public. It's totally, we have services. It's totally different.
Absolutely.
And we have roads. It's totally different. So B County is way ahead of the curve.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Any further discussion? If there's nothing further, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes with one nay vote. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to agenda item number 13, approved request to submit application and request for proposals for a service administrator for the TDA Colonial Planning and Needs Assessment Grant. This item does not need to be considered as agenda item number 12, I did not pass. So we will move on without a vote to agenda item number 14, presentation on Safe Haven Women's Recovery by Angela Clifton, tabled through the June 27, 2022, special call meeting. Ms. Clifton?
Yes.
Come on up. And I'd ask you, I know I just said who you were, but if you would, for the record, identify yourself and your position with the organization and then, and then proceed. Thank you for being here this morning.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Angela Clifton and the group's service representative with Safe Haven Women's Recovery Group, Yarmiel. This meeting is also a meeting that is registered with Cabana, which is the coastal area of Narcotics Phenomenon. I have been a part of this organization, I'm a member since 2013. This meeting itself was registered in April of 2022, just recently. And this meeting is a close-staffed recovery group meeting. It is predominantly for women only. This organization has both meetings for men and women. Um, this organization has both meetings for men and women, but this one is only for women. Um, the hope is that, um, women that struggle with substance abuse can find a new way to live. Um, I'm a person, um, who struggled with substance abuse for many years, since I was 12 years old, and I didn't know that there was, um, such a thing as recovery. Um, so I found myself in and out of institutions, rehabilitation, um, homeless. Um, right here is our great, um, Fugil sector. Um, this is, um, very dear to me. I see a lot of women who struggle, um, and don't have resources. They don't have people that they can relate to. Um, so this meeting hopefully, um, will provide some of that. Um, our mission and our slogan, our goal is that an addict, any addict, can stop using drugs, use the desire to use, and find a better way to live. Um, so I am just, um, presenting this to the community, um, to let people know that we are here, um, I'm here, and I just want to be a voice, um, that if I can do it, anybody can do it. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Ms. Clifton. Uh, if, uh, if anybody, uh, listening, uh, or in the audience today would be interested in, uh, learning more, where are your meetings located and on what days and times?
Yes, sir. Um, this meeting is on Tuesdays and Thursdays from 12 to 1, located at 116 Cleveland. That is the First United Methodist Church. Um, let it be known that we are not affiliated with any church or any other organization. We stand alone. Um, we do not accept outside contribution at all. Um, so basically, everything that we do is within our, ourselves. Um, we are anonymous, so what's there, they're, um, who's been there is also, um, you know, the anonymity is respected. Um, it's very, um, the fellowship is, is amazing. Um, we do hold, like, conventions, um, where addicts from all around the world come together, and, um, we share support of one another. We share our experience, strength, and hope. Um, that way, maybe there's a newcomer that, um, has just come off the street, you know, and is looking for that life, um, they can find that. Um, we not only have, um, meetings here in the state of Texas, but we have them worldwide, Germany, France, Spain, Africa, I mean, they're everywhere. Um, we have, um, our website, uh, Cabana, which is C B A N A dot org. Um, you can find meetings there that are in person and virtual, uh, so perhaps you can't make it, you know, in person, you can, um, tune in through Zoom, and, um, these meetings happen every hour of the day. They're available. Um, so I actually, as of today, um, through this program, through this organization and working each step, I have 2,064 dates. Um, my claim date is November 15th of 2016. My life has forever changed since this organization.
That's excellent. Thank you so much for, for your presentation this morning and for putting this together for the community. Uh, so if anybody feels like they're lost, there is a lot of the end of the tunnel, and it's free, and all you have to do is show up, and you have the information, C B A N A dot O R G?
Yes, sir.
All right. All you got to do, reach out. Thank you so much, Ms. Clifton. Are there any other questions, comments?
Just a comment. Thank you for your courage. Thank you very much.
You have a wonderful day. Moving on, agenda item number 15. Approved Salary Committee Recommendations for the B County Budget Fiscal Year 2023, tabled during the June 27, 2022 special call meeting. You have in your packet what our, uh, current recommendation is? I'd entertain a motion at this time.
Move to approve.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion?
I have some comments, everybody.
Go ahead. You have the floor, Mr. Commissioner.
Yes, we, uh, this came before the court, and we didn't have a full court. We felt it best to table it. We had three members present because it's so important. And, uh, this commissioner presented a document that he had worked on over the weekend on some suggestions to the committee, and I think that, uh, they were offered in the spirit of, uh, here they are, I want to help. They were suggestions. I don't think they were taken that way by some of the committee members, and if so, I want to apologize to them. They were not put out to be in your face. That's the way they were offered. I took a deep dive in the salaries. We had done the same thing when I was with the state, and what we found, unfortunately, we had a lot of state employees that were on food stamps. When I took a deep dive in the county salaries, when you divide a salary by 2080, you come up with how much they make per hour. And what I found, and it was a little disturbing, we, we had people making $12 an hour, and I presented this information to, uh, during court and in a document that I read into the record, and, uh, those were merely suggestions. That's all.
I really appreciate it. Thank you, Commissioner, to wit. And, uh, you know, it's always going to happen that way. It's part of local government, right? We're always going to step on each other's toes, but at the end of the day, um, I think we all, uh, need to, uh, keep in the forefront of everything that we do, that, um, our efforts are on behalf of the county and our employees and the citizens, and as long as we get information out there, we run those traps, uh, we learn more. So, uh, no harm, no foul. I really appreciate your, your comments this morning. I know the Salary Committee does do it, and I know we all really appreciate everything that the Salary Committee does and the effort that, uh, that they take, and, and I'm probably more guilty of stepping on their toes than anybody because I'll just arbitrarily say, oh, I think I want to do this, and they have to react and do it. So, uh, thank you very much, uh, for those comments. Is there anything, uh, any other discussion?
Yes, there's two adjustments that are going to be made on the Salary Committee.
Yes, sir.
And one of them is a replacement, uh, for Johnny Calvahala, and she's to be replaced by Julia Aguirre, uh, the emergency manager. And the other position is, uh, Ms. Laura Warnick, who's not going to be chair anymore, she resigned. So we're going to replace her with Jennifer Brainham.
Those are two wonderful choices. My only question would be, and I don't know, uh, if Candy, uh, is there, is there any necessity for, I don't see, uh, our county clerk, is there any necessity to carve that out into a separate, uh, motion as a, as a, as a list or can we do it?
No, there is no exception. It, it's just a recommendation. Those are just our recommendations.
One more also, uh, Chief Deputy Jones, uh, Chief, uh, Derek Franco's been serving on our committee, and Stacey's going to take his seat, uh, going forward. Does, does Chief? And I think.
Well, yes, he's the one that came in court. I mean, in our committee, yeah.
We'd much rather have two people on the, on the committee, because we're the big department by default.
Can we just?
Put a death on the mantle as much.
Can we just add her and leave Derek? Uh, we can, we can talk about that, I think, okay, in the future. I don't want to make a decision on that. Uh, maybe, okay. Uh, it's an interesting, uh, concept, and we'll consider it, uh, at this time. Thank you, uh, Chief Deputy Jones. So with those, uh, with those three recommendations as to Salary Committee persons and the other recommendations contained in, uh, the presentation in our packet, uh, we do have a motion and we do have a second. Any further discussion? Thank you all for, uh, all of your work in, in all of this regard. Uh, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Agenda item number 16. Approved short, short form agreement between B County and Lynn Engineering LLC, doing business as TDA John D. Mercer and Associates for renovations and expansions of the tax
Judge, this is the, uh, addition to the tax office to, to give IT, uh, some office space?
Extra office.
Extra office.
We've all seen John, John's office is expansive.
And then, and then, uh, Mr. Oliver's office is also sandwiched in between that little space.
It is that blinking light that's probably 80 degrees all the time.
Yeah, that, that offer there, so this is part of the forefront, this is what they asked for on the front end so they can move forward and, uh, keep doing, working on the plans, kind of like we do with the UOC, correct?
Yes, and, um, what I would like to, um, you know, tell the court is that this budget for the expansion won't go until '23. It's going to be budgeted in the budget we're working on currently. So as far as fees, we can swing that, we have professional services, but as far as the whole amount, that will be in 2023. So Mr. Mercer will have to, uh, you know, that.
So what we're considering right now are fees associated with preparing for whatever the project is, will ultimately be approved or, or not approved. Of course, we're only, we're 90 days away from that, you but.
Yes, sir, right.
So we can carve it out, out of those plans. Basically, we had one, but I know they added an office or they changed an office that's back part of that building. If that's not feasible or if that's not cost effective, we'll exit out and just add the three offices.
I have not entertained a motion. I would do so at this time.
I make a motion that we, uh, pay for this out of professional services and move forward and then, uh, bring it up in this next, this one year.
Aye. I have a motion in multiple seconds. Thank you, gentlemen. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Agenda item number 17. Approved interlocal cooperation agreement between counties associated with Operation Lone Star for law enforcement services. Do I have a motion to approve? Move to approve? I've got a motion and a second. Further discussion? Chief Deputy Jones, this seems to be, uh, business as usual or anything?
Yes, sir, uh, this is working cooperatively with, uh, under agency and we do it on a normal basis, uh, Operation Lone Star. I'm starting to further into that.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Chief Deputy Jones. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. And Ms. Hope, did you get that motion in second?
I did.
Okay, good, thank you. Uh, moving on, agenda item number 18. America Rescue Plan Stat, ARP Status and Projects. Yes, sir.
If you would?
Yes, sir, you have the floor.
I think we've got some good stuff again. Uh, have we, have we been able to get those final bids on the colony rescue?
No.
Okay. Got still pending that. And then Ms. Yuturia did some stuff on her own, which we appreciate. She found out that we can possibly put in a brand-new elevator using ARP funds. So, members, you, give us a little more information on that.
Okay, yes, sir. Um, I did reach out. Oh, again, I'm sorry, Grace, uh, it's up the other side, County Attorney. Um, I did reach out to, um, Angela from that work. I, I, you know, I gave her information on how long the elevator has been out, and she did say that we could use our, our funds for that. Um, and I just told her we were going to look for bids, uh, get bids on either repair or, or.
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Yuturia. We don't actually have any bids back yet, right? We do have, just so everybody knows, we, we are, uh, I know we're working incredibly diligently trying to find somebody that can fix our elevator. This has been a very difficult issue for the county for going on six months, I mean, so five months now.
Judge, if we make the change of the elevator, do we have to go through the, the story with the budget?
Well, and, and the good, the good, the good news with that, the answer is probably yes, uh, but the good news with that is Ms. Yuturia has a wonderful relationship with, uh, Tynan Chalgalo, our Texas State Historical Commission, uh, representative, and I believe there may be, uh, small amount of funds that might be available from Texas Historical Commission on Elevator Repairs as well, but, uh, the answer is yes, we'll probably have to, uh, have them approve whatever plan we go forward with. Is that correct?
Um, I believe so, yes. And I, whenever we, um, get to how much it's going to cost, I'll contact Tynan.
So, so we're in the process of going in, getting bids to totally replace it?
Um, I don't know. I, I know I've been talking to Candy, and she's gotten with similar.
Right, so you don't have a, we don't have a bid, a bid package. I, I believe this would be a.
Well, they're just troubleshooting right now, as far as I know.
So we may have a either or as a part of, as a part of that process, but Shindler said, we'll give you a quote on what it's going to take to fix it, and we'll give you a quote almost.
I don't, he was, he was here last week, wasn't he?
Yes.
Yeah, he was there working.
And they'll be again, he's still here again this week.
This has been quite a difficult situation.
Yeah.
In the future, a county building should only be one floor.
Yeah. And, and spread. But thank you for your initiative on this because that's good news because it's, uh, it's going to be.
Need five more hands, Judge.
Thank you, Ms. Yuturia. What else, uh, Commissioner, to wit?
I don't think there's anything else committees, or anything else we have, but actually, we're, we're basically waiting on the second tranche of funds. And we're using some of the funds left over out of the first tranche to pay for some of these things.
Excellent, excellent, excellent.
We don't want to leave any money on the table.[1645.01]